Welcome to the Anna ISD Board of Trustees Forum hosted by your greater Anna Chamber of Commerce. Whether you're in the room with us tonight or watching later, we appreciate you taking the time to make a difference in our community. I'm Tiffany Terry, Chair of the Anna Chamber Board. It is my privilege to introduce your moderators, Jessie Villarreal, Secretary of the Anna Chamber Board, and the Anna Chamber President/CEO Kevin Hall. As a reminder, this forum is being recorded and will be posted on social media later for our neighbors to review. Please keep that in mind during this session. After the forum is over, we will have a few minutes for meet and greet. Lastly, we want to recognize our lead chamber investors who helped us year-round with our advocacy. Our trailblazers are Adon Complete Air Conditioning and Heating, Bay Corp South, Bloomfield Homes, the City of Anna Community Development Corporation, and Texas Bank. Our community partners are N D Tourist State Farm, Centurion American Development Group, Lisa Biddle Realty, Root Keller Williams North Country, Neighborhood Credit Union, Randolph Brooks Federal Credit Union, and the UPS Store.
Thank you Tiffany. Again Tiffany is our Chair of the Board of Directors. For the candidates, I'm going to ask each of you the same question. The first question will start with Diane, and then to Jason, then to Monty. Then the next question will start with Jason, Monty, then Diane, lastly, Monty, Diane, Jason. That way, there is a mix of who answers the question first, so you can't be copycatting like I would be if I was in your position. And that way, it also makes it fair to everybody that's here in the forum. So, thank you all again for taking the time to run for a volunteer position, because it takes a lot of energy and passion to even to be in the running. And the Chamber supports whoever wins. We support you no matter what, because the Chamber is a nonpartisan organization, and we work directly with the school board and city council, so we wish the best for everybody. This is going to help me with keeping count of the time. For the first round of questions, well first you'll start with saying a little bit about yourself. You have two minutes. Then we'll do a round of questions where you have one minute to answer. Then we'll do a round of questions with 30 seconds to answer. Then lastly, before we wrap up, you'll get one more minute just to reiterate or say anything that you may have forgotten to say throughout as we wrap up. And then again, after that, we'll have people out here in the audience that will meet and greet until 8:00 P.M. This has been recorded on Zoom, so if you're in the audience, just know that it is being recorded. We are going to post this later on our social media accounts and in our newsletter. So please be courteous and respectful of that as the microphone may pick you up in the audience. Okay? Lastly, I want to thank Detective Sergeant Rush Smith being our security tonight. He's with the Anna Police Department, so thank you Detective Sergeant for taking the time. Now, we're going to start with Diane. You have two minutes to tell us about yourself.
Hello, is it working? So I am a native of California. I lived there for about half my life now. I've lived in Texas. And we've been in the Anna area for about 14, 15 years. And we have, my husband and I, we have three children. One of them we lost to a tragic drowning accident five years ago. The other two, I have a middle-schooler-aged son and an elementary-school-aged daughter. My oldest and younger were born with Angelman Syndrome, a neurological disability. So I am well acquainted with being a parent, a caregiver, and an advocate. And I am very passionate about this rising generation, and I am really excited about the opportunity to serve in a greater capacity in this school district. Some of the things that I really enjoy doing outside of school involvement is I love the outdoors. One thing I really enjoy is biking and hiking, because it's the two things. I also love reading. I really, really, really enjoy reading and learning. I got a history degree, a bachelor's degree from Brigham and University of Hawaii, and that really encouraged my love and appetite for research and for reading as well and writing. Those are some things I really enjoy doing. And that is about it for me.
Very much. Jason, by the way, we'll save time when your time is up. So giving you a warning would just, I want to make it easier for everybody.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd first like to apologize. My sound is having a bit of a bit of a roundhouse. So if you don't understand something I'm saying, just ask me to repeat myself, and I'll repeat myself again. My name is Jason Adams. I've lived in Anna my whole life, besides a short stint going off to college and coming back. So I've been here 44 years. I'm serving my third term currently on Board of Trustees for the school district. My lovely wife Jennifer is here with me tonight. We have three boys, Jet, Ken, I've got a freshman, Jamison, and a senior, Jayden, that are both competing at a varsity game right now, or they would be here with us. I believe in servant leadership. I believe in giving back to the community. They've given me so much. And that's why I do what I do in the community. I try to volunteer with youth sports. Again, I've been on the board for almost nine years now. I'm an advisor for the CTE program. I'm on the FFA Booster Club as the Vice President. I served on the law enforcement advisory committee with the school district. So anywhere I can get my feet in to try to contribute, to give back, that's my goal. That's what I want to do. And that's just a little bit about me. Thank you.
Thank you, Monty.
All right, good evening. Monty Renfro, I've been in Anna for, this is coming on my ninth year. Currently serving on the board and completing my first term. Running again for a second. I am a proud father of five, four girls, one son. One of them in college, and then I have four in the district here in Anna. From eighth grade down to third, so we've got a good mix there. I am a businessman, entrepreneur. I own several companies that are here in the state, primarily office out of McKinney. I probably do business in Anna, think with Anna, want to try to do as much as I can with Anna at all times. So I think, you know, I believe in an attitude of service to. That's why I got on the board in the first place. I believe in the growth of this community and the growth of these children. I think a big part of what we have going on in the world today, and a lot of the, I guess, non-unity, if you will, is due to the lack of real structure in these homes for these kids. I think they get a lot of that from our school district, and we really want to try to provide that at a higher level. So that's a big part of why I'm on this.
All right, thank you. For this next round, there'll be one minute for each candidate to respond to a question. All candidates will be given the same question. I'll say it once, but if you want it repeated when it's your turn, please just let me know. Otherwise, I'll be ready to answer. When it's your turn, we started with Diane, so this next, this first question goes to Jason. Jason, as a potential school board member, what do you think the district can do to recruit and retain quality teachers and staff members in the district?
Well, we can't fool ourselves. Salary is number one. When you're talking about recruiting good quality candidates, you have to talk about salary, and you have to be competitive in that field. Retention is probably the biggest thing. We've been able to bring in great teachers and administrators. And in order to, in order to retain those individuals, we have to, we have to find out, we have to do more than just salaries. We have to, we have to develop some type of atmosphere where they want to stay here with us. And I think as a board, as administration, we've done that, especially over the last few years. If you look at the candidates that we've brought in for certain roles and positions in the district, it's phenomenal. We're pulling from five and six A schools that are wanting to come to Anna because they hear about what we're doing here. So, you know, again, say salary, but you have to, you have to make a place where people want to live. It's not just about the districts. It's about the community as well. They have to have a place where they think they're comfortable.
Thanks, Jason. Monty, same question.
Yeah, I'll second Jason's opinion on the money. It's very important. Their income is important to them. I think it's something that they first look at as far as attraction goes to the area. However, our community is in a growth pattern. We are drawing a lot of talent to our facilities and to our staffing product. But I think, you know, one of the bigger issues that I think is something we're addressing as a board is everything from the ISD and pushing out of the community because, you know, more of a unity approach to everything we do. So I think, you know, what people get when they come to us, they get a board that believes in them. They get a board that's going to support them on every level and listens to them. We spend a lot of time in the community, all of us that are currently on the board now. We listen, and we bring it back, and we try our best to, you know, provide a level of change to all our employees. Because at the end of the day, if they don't feel supported, they leave. Nine times out of 10, that's the money is not the problem.
Thanks. Same question.
I definitely agree that competitive wages are very important to teaching staff. As small-business owners, I know that to have best employees, you got to invest in them. So I also completely support investing in our teachers through training and further education for them to help them in their desires to pursue education for themselves and training and move up in their careers. But I also, I also support being loyal to them and where they want to teach. I don't support in shuffling teachers between campuses and different positions because it looks better on paper. And I know our district is facing some massive growth right now. And so I think there's definitely a balance to take between supporting our teachers and being loyal to them, but also being cognizant of the growth that we're experiencing and the need to hire new staff. Because I think we need to be careful in displacing staff that we currently have and help them feel our loyalty to them in training and wages and keeping them where they would like to be.
For the second question, we're going to start with Monty. Monty, what is your vision for education in this community?
My vision for education in our community is a real sense of individualism as much as we can throughout our district. For years, I was raised to think that we had, everyone had to go to college. And I don't think that's really where we're at. We have a phenomenal CTE program. I think my vision for education here is to, A, make sure that we're getting everybody to school, and that they're being fed and they're being treated right, and the teachers are giving them good instruction. But then taking that individual approach to them, see where they want to go in life. Teach these kids how to survive in this world that doesn't really care about them. You know, the parent, once the parents are done, the world doesn't care about them anymore. I want to give them a place where they feel comfortable entering there. So that's, that's my vision for education.
Thank you. Diane.
My vision for our school district is definitely one to promote a love of learning. Is how to learn and find accurate information. I feel like that's one of the most valuable gifts that we can give to them is to help them love gaining new knowledge, because that is what life is about. High school, elementary school, there is life beyond that, and we are constantly living a life of learning. And so to instill that in them, in that passion for gaining new knowledge, and also teaching them how to do that, I feel like that is a critical component of the world we live in today is being able to research and fact-find accurate information. And I want to be able to help our district have a vision of guiding our students in loving that, that life of learning, also being able to find knowledge and continue that life after they've graduated. Because we want them to be happy. We want them to be contributing members of society. And I feel like that's one of the greatest ways that we can support them to do that.
Thank you. Jason, same question.
You know, for, for a long time, schools really leaned towards college readiness, and that's, that's great. I'm all for that. But you also have to look further than that. There's some kids that college is not their forte. That's not what they, they're going to do for the rest of their life, or that's not how they're going to excel in life. So you have to look at the CTE programs, develop trades with these kids, something they can get out and be certified in when they hit the field. And I think we've done a phenomenal job of that with the district. We have, we've implemented several programs. These kids can be certified in and, and develop their skill set. And even if they do go to college, they can use those skill sets while they're going to college to help pay for college so they're not so in debt when they get out with student loans and things of that nature. And it's also community involvement. They have, they have to know that there's, there's other ways of learning than just the school district. There's church. There's, there's, you know, different aspects of the, of the community that they can volunteer and be a part of that will help them grow and develop as individuals as well.
Thank you. For this third question, we'll start back with Diane. Diane, what motivates you to want to become an elected official?
Well, I've spent many years as a parent of an Anna ISD student. And I have had some fantastic experiences over the years, and I've had some really horrible experiences over the years. And, and I, I think after 2020 and seeing just how crazy life can get, it really motivated me to do something about my passion for helping my own children and expand that into really helping the children of our whole district. Because I know all the things I have done for my own children will benefit those around them. I really look forward to the opportunity to expand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Sure. What motivates you to want to become an elected official?
Yeah, for me, it's not so much about being an alleged official. It's more of that servant leadership. It's more of giving back to a community. They've given me so much. Like I said, you know, this, this community raised me. I know who I am because of this community. You know, the, the Sonny Joes or the Ronnie Carters, that, you know, the, those, those type of individuals are so many more than John Adams is. Those guys are maybe, you know, who I am today, whether it's either learned by example or learned in what to do. But it's, that's what it's about for me. It's not, it's not about being an elected official. It's about giving back to this community and giving back to the kids in the district and doing what I can to maybe be a role model or a mentor for, for them to grow up and be successful.
Thank you. Monty, same question.
Being an elected official to me, and the reason I had a desire to do it in the beginning was, again, attitude of service to, I don't know, want to set an example for my children that we can give back to the community. It's more about being involved. I see, I see chronically in our society as a whole, a lot of people have opinions, and a lot of people will share their negativity across the board on social media contact that there is. But they're not willing to step up and do any work to do something about change. And so that's a big part of who I am. I want to promote unity in our board. I think we do a phenomenal job of that. And that's why I'm here.
Thank you. This is the fourth question. We'll start with Jason. What would you want to see in a strong community-school literacy initiative?
Well, when you talk about school literacy, you're talking about, you know, there's different aspects of that. You're talking about phonics, vocabulary, and comprehension and things of that nature, and writing. Writing is a huge part of that as well. I think with new superintendent we brought in, he hit it on the nail on the head with starting groundwork with our elementary students and started a good literacy program with them, so we'll develop them all the way through. You know, I have, my middle child had some dyslexic tendencies, and the district caught it early. And they put him in a reading program with Ms. Motley, who has since retired from the district, but she was a phenomenal reading teacher. And the first thing she taught him was how to write Curse of the Panera. I think there's a, I'm a huge proponent of teaching kids how to write curse. I think it, I think it translates over to the reading program, and I think it helps them become better readers. I'm not an expert on it by any means, but I've seen what it did with my kid. He's carrying a 3.9 GPA.
Thank you. Monty, same question.
Can you repeat it again?
Yes. What would you want to see in a strong community-slash-school literacy initiative?
You mentioned community and school, so, I mean, I agree with, with Jason on the school product. We, we have initiated new programs in the elementary side that I'm familiar with that have really, really enhanced the reading ability with these kiddos, their understanding, reading comprehension. We're doing U I L competitions even at the elementary level in that. My kiddos, both, my two youngies, both participated in that this year. But the community side, I know we, we do a lot in our community for our English and second language piece. We're instructing parents in, out in the, out in the community through our school district and providing that service to them. That seems to be really, really effective in helping these kiddos that are struggling in that home environment from a literacy perspective to continue to grow even while they're at home. I think, I want to see us continue to enhance the products that we're currently doing and look for other opportunities to grow.
Thank you. Diane, same question.
I agree with the things they said. And I, literacy is key. Every bit of education that our students face now and in the future is based on a foundation of literacy. And so I absolutely support any efforts that we make to improve the literacy programs we have in our school for all children, including our special populations' children, and especially those with dyslexia. And one of the things that breaks my heart is whenever I talk to a friend as an adult, and they tell me they hated reading as a child, and they didn't find out they were dyslexic until they were an adult. And I would love to see our district even up their efforts to catch children from a younger age with dyslexia and provide them with the tools and resources and train all of our teachers to be able to incorporate those teaching styles into their classroom to benefit all students.
Thank you. After reading the question after, I realized I didn't do slash for Jason. So what I'm going to do is give everyone a 30-second rebuttal to yourselves. So I'm going to ask a question again. Jason, try to repeat for the 30 seconds. What do you want to see in a strong community-slash-school literacy initiative? Jason, you have 30 seconds.
Well, I don't know that my question or my answer is going to be much different than the original answer. You know, Monty, he hit, he hit on our, our secondary literature program that we're offering to the community, and I think that's huge. I think that's, that's a, that's a milestone in this community to be able to offer that to parents so that they can actually help their students with homework and, and, you know, there's not that, that bridge. There's not a gap there.
Monty, you have 30 seconds for that same question, community-slash-school.
I'm comfortable with what I said in the final answer.
Thank you, Diane. You have 30 seconds if you choose, community-slash-school.
I also agree in supporting the ESL program within our schools and outside in our community. And maybe amping up our encouragement for reading programs in the community could be a positive thing. Encouraging families and children to read together more.
Thank you. For this fifth question, we'll start with Monty. What is one, what, excuse me. Monty, what is one important attribute essential for successful school board members?
I think, you know, you have to have the ability to listen to other people's opinions. The purpose of the board is to come in with your own agenda, your own opinion, but yield to others wherever the group is advising you in another way. And so I think the biggest, most important attribute that I think happens within our, and it currently happens within our board is, you know, voice your opinion, but take the time to listen to others. And if it's the best opinion as a group, yield to it and move forward for what's best in the district. So that's, it's a very important attribute.
Thank you. Diane, same question.
I agree with him that listening is key. And also the ability to reconcile differences as a group. I think it's extremely important to be able to work well with others and be able to actively voice opinion, but also listen to others and be able to come to an agreement on difficult subjects and easy subjects. Because we are a group of different people with different perspectives, which is a good thing. But being able to, to value those differences, to come together, to make decisions for the greater good of our students.
Thank you. Jason, same question.
You have to be involved. You have to be involved in the community. You have to be involved in the district. You have, you can't hide in the shadows and just let things pass you by. You have to be a part of it. You have to be willing to step forward and give your opinions and your views and share your constituents' opinions as well. And, and just share those as a board. And if there's disagreements, there's disagreements, but bipartisanship, although it's not political, bipartisanship's huge. I think you have to be able to concede and, and grow and develop as a board together. And I think we've got a great team that's currently together. I couldn't be prouder of the team that we have.
Thank you. This next question, we'll start with Diane. This will be the last of the one-minute questions. You have one minute for this answer. It's a two-part question. What are your academic goals for students before they leave high school? How would you support the work towards these goals?
Some of the academic goals, I, again, I mentioned earlier, I want to instill in our children and youth a love of learning. I want them to have that passion for learning regardless of which subject they are studying. I also, I'm also a huge proponent of financial literacy. I think that right now, we've had some great initiatives working on college and career readiness. But I also feel strongly, especially as a small-business owner, that you can have the biggest income in the world, and it won't be happiness or success for you if you don't know how to manage your bank account. And I think that is something that I would be a huge proponent for adding into our curriculum to help our students in their success past high school, moving it up. And, and again, just focusing on that, helping them have a love for research and critical thinking and studying whatever they are.
Thank you. Jason, same question.
Well, I've mentioned this a little bit, but again, I'm, I'm huge on the CTE program. I think, I think developing these kids and giving them a broader spectrum to, to grow and learn from is invaluable. Ms. Hope will hit on it a little bit. Life skills, that's, that's a huge proponent of the CTE program. I think that can be implemented into the program. We have to be careful about growing that program so quickly because we don't want to overshadow some of the programs we already have in place. But yes, career readiness or college readiness is essential. However, we have to develop these kids to have trades and, and other types of resources where they can develop and grow.
Thank you. Monty, same question.
I'll definitely echo the CTE product, but also, you know, I believe in, in the employability piece. We do employability skills in the middle school. Currently, we have classes specifically designed for that. But I'd like to see that extended into the high school model. Just the whole life skill, employability skill, what she spoke about with, you know, managing your checkbook, managing your income. I mean, the fact that you have to pay taxes, I mean, things that we just, you know, as parents, it's our responsibility to teach our children that, but we know that a lot of that's just not going well. And we see that routinely. So I want to, I want to really push for them to find themselves and find a way to deal with, you know, being independent whenever they leave high school. That's my hope.
Thank you. For this next round of questions, we'll have 30 seconds. We'll start with Jason. Jason, how would you handle the requests if approached by an individual or special interest group?
The same way I've handled it over the last nine years. You know, I'll open those requests, those concerns. That's, that's what I'm, that's what I've signed up to do. But the way you handle that is when you try to educate them the best you can, you know, refer them back to policies, refer them back to the administration for questions. And then on top of that, you listen to their concerns, you, you bring it to the board, and amongst the board and administration, you note about them whatever their concerns are. You can't make promises. The only thing you can promise is that you're going to address that issue with the board.
Thank you. Monty, same question.
I agree. It depends on, it depends on their request. But I mean, if they want to know when the meeting is, I'll give them that right away. But outside of that, I, I listen. I don't make decisions as an individual. We do all things as a board, not willing to be swayed in any way regarding their agendas or any of those type of things. And so I'll listen to concerns if it's, you know, a group, and take it back to the board, just like Jason said. And we'll discuss the issues, discuss the concerns. And if there's a true value issue that we need to deal with, we do, and we see those things all the time. But as far as responding.
Thank you. Diane, same question.
Same thing. I would listen to concerns brought forward to me. But as far as moving forward, I would discuss it with the board and not do anything unless it is outlined within our abilities as a board and within our policies.
Thank you. We're going to start with Monty for this next question. Monty, could you support a board decision you did not vote in favor of and elaborate?
Absolutely, and if I could have. I mean, you, you're not always going to be in favor of a group movement or what's best for the district. A lot of us have our own individual thoughts or opportunities to discuss those things come up in the board. We sometimes have to vote on things as a group and go with that decision from a majority perspective. That's the purpose of the board. So I absolutely would support that. Once we leave our decision room, I'm going to support what the board has done. That's, that's my, that's my role as a board member.
Thank you, Diane. Same question. Same question.
Uh, yes, and in different leadership positions I've had, especially in my church, uh, there's many opportunities to, uh, discuss things. And, uh, sometimes it's not what I want to see happen and that's okay. Um, and I think the same goes for the school board. There are going to be times that I don't necessarily agree, but I will absolutely support what the board decides. Cause that's my purpose is to work as a board together for the greater good.
Thank you. Jason, same question.
Yes, it's a, it's, it's definitely not about me. It's not about an individual thought. It's, it's about a team and, and what that team decides to do. And, and as I speak of a team, I'm talking about the board. And you have to, you have to trust your board members, you have to trust your administration that, that they have the best interest at heart. And, and if your idea or your, your concerns are, are not something that needs to be addressed or they need to be, um, swayed more or no, then, then that's perfectly fine. You make your stance known and then you work as a team to move forward.
Thank you. Diane, this is, start with you for this question. What can a school board member do to embrace and plan for the enrollment growth NIST is experiencing?
That is a good question. Um, I think we really need to work together with, um, as a team, superintendent, school board, our buildings manager, to be able to be prepared in all areas, whether it's academics or building necessities. It's just important to be aware of what our projected growth is. I'm sure the city of Anna has ideas of what that growth is expected to be and be able to plan for that the best that we can.
Thank you. Jason, same question.
Yeah, you, uh, you have to be on board with the city. It, it has to be a co-partnership for sure. Uh, I think we've done a really good job, uh, with the communication between the, the district and the city over the last three to four years. Uh, you know, we've, we've teamed up to have, um, group meetings where the council comes to us or, or we go to them for, for our monthly meetings. Communication is huge. And as long as you're both on the same page and you're working together, then, then you should be, you should stay ahead of the curve.
Thank you. Monty, same question.
Repeat the question, please.
Yes. What can a school board member do to embrace and plan for the enrollment growth NIST is experiencing?
Okay, so I mean, the, the enrollment growth is definitely a result of just our general square footage across our community. I mean, we are exploding growth with regards to rooftops and housing and subdivisions. We're ahead of that curve and we have multiple committees that are already broken out into the city. Uh, we're usually one or more of our board members participate in those committees to discuss upcoming plans. We'll bring that back to the board, we work in conjunction with the city, we work in conjunction with the developers. And, you know, we're, I believe we're well ahead of that curve right now.
Thank you. This will be our 10th question, the last 30, 30 seconds. And after that, you each get one minute for your final thoughts. We're going to start with Jason. Jason, what do you believe your relationship should be to city council officials? How should the board achieve this?
Well, like I said, you, you've got to have communication with your city officials, um, from the local level all the way through the state level. You, you have to have, uh, a working knowledge of, of one another and, um, a shared responsibility really of, of what the common goal is for everybody across the board. Again, I think we've done a phenomenal job with the, uh, the city and the communication we have there. You know, we've got, uh, administrators that go to the city council meetings. We, we stay abreast of, of what's going on in the city and, and as well as they do in the district. So I think that's.
Make sure some, Monty, same question.
As Jason said, we, we've got to make a point to be present. We've got to make a point to be available. We've got to be involved. You know, I, I do make a point to communicate openly with city officials, uh, communicate to them my position and, and communicate, you know, routinely with them about what's going on in our district and how it affects them and how their product affects us. And so it's really important for us to just, again, stay available and stay involved.
Thank you. Diane, same question.
Yes, I have to agree with both of them, um, that our relationship shouldn't be a separate one. It should be one where we are working together because we are overlapping into things that we are doing, whether it's zoning or, uh, new buildings, um, taxation and whatnot. We, we need to work together and be aware of what, when, uh, each other is doing and work together, to help build our school district and, uh, stay within the city's vision as well.
Thank you all. We're going to start with Monty for your one-minute final thoughts.
Final thoughts is, you know, I've been blessed by, by serving on this, on this board. I've learned a lot. Uh, I learned really quickly what the board doesn't do. When I, when I came, when I came on, I, I really felt like, um, I was really, uh, immature in what I knew about what the board accomplishes and what our real role is. So it's been a great board to be a part of, been a lot of learning for me. Um, I've enjoyed it. I look forward to serving again for another three years. And I look forward to growing our community and growing our children in a way that we, we should be. And I think our board is dedicated to that. I think we're, we're, it's a, it's a great group of people that are working hard together to serve the common goal. So it's been a blessing to be here and that's my final thought.
Thank you. Diane, same question. Your one minute for your final thoughts.
Um, yes, I am very excited for the opportunity to serve, um, as an NIST board trustee. I really, like I said, have a great passion for this upcoming generation and I want to be able to have an impact, on who they are and who they are becoming. I really, um, appreciate the work that's been done in our school board already and, uh, know that there is a lot of work to do. And, um, I really, really think that I can offer a unique and fresh perspective to the group. Um, that would be greatly benefited by that. And, um, again, I, I'm excited for the opportunity to do this. I'm very passionate about anything that I put my mind to doing. I'm a very quick learner and I'm excited to, to expand my knowledge and understanding of this organization and, uh, the things that we are able to accomplish together.
Thank you. Jason, you have one minute for your final thoughts.
Yeah, I've, I've grown leaps and bounds over the last nine years. Um, I've had some, I've had some great mentors that kind of showed me the way, uh, when I first got on the board. And probably for the first year, I, I didn't say a word, I just listened, soaked it all up. And I, I'm, I'm grateful for the people that have helped me develop as an investor for the district as, as much as they have. I, uh, I, I've been truly blessed to serve the district. Um, I hope, I hope that, you know, that I'm able to do that for the next three years. Uh, I feel confident that I'm, um, I'm very qualified for that position and, uh, just look forward to, if, if given the opportunity to, to serve the district for another term.
Thank you. Well, a few minutes, um, uh, we'll stop the recording in just a minute, but we have a few minutes to, to wrap up the, with all of the audience. But first, as someone who does public speaking all the time, thank each of you because public speaking is one of the highest fears someone has. So you all did a wonderful job. Thank you very much. Again, this is recorded. We'll post this on our social media link, so you can forward it to share that. Before we wrap up, I want to again thank our board members here in attendance. We have our past chair, Pete Chan, Pete Kane, our current chair, Tiffany Terry, secretary, Jessie Villarreal. I'm Kevin Hall, your president and CEO. We also want to thank First and the Church for letting us use their facility tonight, including their microphones and the church building. So thank you for that. We appreciate it. Again, want to thank Detective Sergeant Rush Smith for bringing our security and then our lead chamber investors who can help us to educate, connect and advocate for our community all year long. Our Trail Placers are AIDON Complete Air Conditioning and Heating, Bank Corp. South, Bloomfield Homes, the City of Anna Community Development Corporation and Texas Bank. Our community partners are Andy Torres State Farm, Centurion American Development Group, Lisa Middle Realty Group, Tella Williams North Country, Neighborhood Credit Union, Renal Brooks Federal Credit Union and the UBS Store. We're going to stop the recording, AV time to have a few minutes here with the audience. Thank you all.